Do you want to call? Jessica.
Here.
Brad.
Yes.
Yeah.
Here.
Jim.
Here.
Kurt.
Here.
Here.
And also here. Meeting is properly certified.
Yes.
Please ring in special reasons.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You are volunteer musicians, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mount Horev area school district in partnership with community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-employed members of society.
Thank you, Jessica. Moving on to two A, approval of the agenda.
Second.
Seconded by Leah, seconded by Jessica. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to two B, approval of the May 16, 2022 board meetings. Nina, any minutes?
Second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Jim. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I will abstain.
Thank you.
Can I quick point of order that you don't have to abstain, it drives me batty.
Okay.
But you don't have to.
Parliamentary.
You don't have to.
Okay. Noted. All right, moving on to three, addressing the board. Three A, we have our students' public.
Boy, you know, when you think about the families that just really have the vigor and the pulse of their children and the school district that are truly partners, it's the Milton family. They're just absolutely fantastic. And you know, we've got one fantastic young lady who's going to be represented by the high school tonight. I'd like to introduce Principal Lundquist, Assistant Principal Corcoran, and Assistant Principal Nelson to tell us all about Gwenna. Yeah, could you please? And Gwenna, why don't you have you come up here so we can embarrass you? Yes. You're ready, yeah, right here.
We really want to hear this.
We want to hear it.
So we always have to leave our time to this because we have so many wonderful students in Mount Horev, but these names, these people kind of come back up over and over when we talk to staff and you see them at events and we talk, you just, you hear the name a lot. And that's one of those things that we fortunately hear a lot, and all the good things, but not the bad stuff. We're just delighted to have her here. We had an opportunity to reach out to some teachers. We got some great thoughts and we thought we'd, Ms. Corcoran wants to share some of the wonderful things that teachers said.
So you've had four or five in response, so you're very popular and well-liked around the building. So again, I shot out emails to some teachers and I was like, hey, like, could you just highlight some of the wonderful things that Gwenna is doing? So the first one is Gwenna is amazing, creative, passionate, and a responsible student. She's drafting a novel this semester as independent study, and her passionate advocacy for diversity and equity was clear when she delivered a powerful speech. I feel so fortunate to have her as my student. That's from Molly Gilsey. Gwenna's dedication to inclusivity and equity makes her clear in her community and in the classroom. She's not a passive learner, but actively engages in each lesson, trying to find personal meaning in everything she does at school. That's what Ms. Carlson. Gwenna is very deserving. In our strength and fitness class, she's a great leader who is active whenever possible. This class typically doesn't have a lot of females in it, like a traditional PE class, so her courage to take the class is a great example for leadership and willingness to do what is best in the best interest of herself. And that's from Ms. Nelson. So in our team, you're a student that provides a welcoming presence for any student that you come in contact with. You are very involved in our music program and you're a very strong advocate for student wellness in the building. I remember meeting you my first year at that high school and your first year as a freshman, and it's a privilege to know you. You're a wonderful presence. I love the conversations that we've had while you've been in the building, too, and I just am so fortunate to know you, and I'm very excited that we get to honor you tonight.
Thank you.
Good talk. You have brought a great group of friends and family here tonight. Would you mind if you do some of them for us, please?
So this is my younger mother, Grant, and my mom, Angel, my dad, Andy, my grandpa, Mary, and my grandpa, Jack. They're my biggest supporters.
We're so grateful for your support of Gwen and also your son, who by the way, little fact, was also picked as a student of the month recipient. Now, I want to say maybe two years ago?
One year ago.
One year? Okay, so time flies. Coming out to your beautiful home and how welcoming you all were to us, and we're just so, so easy to understand why the family is just as special as you all are. Can we commemorate this special night by taking a picture together with the family, our administration? And welcome to Mr. Mertz. Mr. Mertz is the high school liaison for the board. I think maybe it might be best to do that just out in the, in the comments area. Would that be okay if we take a quick break there and do that?
If you'd like me to just read us the whole topic.
Yeah, as slowly as I can.
Word for word.
So I see there's a house being built, are you close to it?
Yeah.
Do you know the neighbors?
I was just gonna say, are you building something in the second room there?
No. Nope, I, I'm trying to be charitable, so I, it's just not the answer. Well, it's not, I mean, people can do what they want to, so it's okay, it's okay. They should consider some of it as they, as they do it. Don't care, don't care.
I didn't really ever pay attention while I'm driving, but somebody else was driving, so then I looked up and I was like, hey, that's cool.
Yeah. That's what it is.
That's no boy.
We knew it would come something, but not with like, like maybe far. Yeah, right. Yeah, we, we, we can see from our, from our living room, we can see the bullet that he dodged, because they clear, you know, there, there's, it comes from the north, comes down to J and then across J.
It's like six inches off their property.
Yeah, exactly. So, but this, but this path that comes over that hill to J from wherever the hell it comes from, they have, I mean, the swath that they have, that they have cleared and the towers that they put up even, and that would, that literally, even under the second option, would have come straight over J, straight through that, that farm area, straight between Dale's house and the nursery, and across S and up my, straight through my property. And they would have, they would have had this foot on my property, they would have had the foot. Two or three.
And how are they rusty on it?
That's the, they do that on purpose. They have figured, they have figured out, this is what I said, that that is the least optically intrusive of.
Could they paint the lower half green, the upper half blue, so it wouldn't look?
Yeah. And across the river.
It can't cross.
Yeah. It's really weird, I mean, they're so good at this math. The math is that even if we, even if, if we're disallowed from, from making the entire line go, it's cheaper for us to have built what we've built because of, because of the time value of mine. Right?
It's crazy.
Otherwise, it wouldn't be, otherwise they would be building. I mean, it has to make financial sense to them to build it, otherwise they wouldn't.
Yeah.
School news, so we don't have our student representative here, because I'm sure because he graduated.
We did have a wonderful graduation ceremony and a tip of the hat to our high school administration for figuring out every last effort that needed to be done in order to launch that success, but it was really well, well-done, well-attended. I heard we had about 1,500 people online watching, in addition to what we see about maybe 1,500, another 1,500 in person, so really, really pleased with that event and grateful and for our staff and of course, our students and families. We've got a survey that you may have heard about that has been out to our families since May 23rd. That comes due June 10th, so we'll put another reminder to our families on June the 9th. We've done some social media updates and we have quite a bit of a response so far, and we encourage as many people as possible to please complete that survey with reference to a potential referendum around capital as well as operational means. And then I want to extend a note of congratulations to one of our partners in our community. That's the CCS school here in town, our 4K partners, the Montessori program at school. They just broke ground tonight, and let me tell you, it was just absolutely a wonderful representation of bringing everyone from the community together in support of this competition, which is doing good and right by our kids. So it was a very, very special evening. Thank you to Mr. Mertz for being there and taking pictures, and I know his wife is an integral part of that program's success, as Kimberly Saylor, former Board of Education president, is now on the CCS board as well, so she's always up to good things, isn't she? And last but not least, I regret to tell you all that the last day of school is near us, and that will happen, I believe, this Thursday. Is that right? Is that when that's happening? 11 o'clock in the morning for our ELC PC and then 11:15 for our third through 11th grade, and then in 89 more days, the students get to return.
See, there's students there.
Yeah, you should see all the students.
Thank you so much.
Board members, do you need school news?
So June 10th, the last day of school, the PTO is working with Akey Stinky and we're having a share day, so get your ice cream and coffee and waffles and all the deliciousness. June 10th.
Other school news?
I will add that the middle school is still working on this musical, and Shrap is being performed on the rehearsal all week and perform on Friday, and I think, no, not Saturday, Friday.
Friday.
Yep.
Great, other school news? All right, we'll move on to three C, citizens' comments. Do we have anybody?
Hope you signed up.
Were there any citizens' comments tonight? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to four A, our personnel transactions.
Board members, there is an addendum in your packet received.
Motion.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Jessica. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to five, consent agenda. Is there anything anybody would like to pull out?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Leah, seconded by Karen, we approve consent agenda. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to six, our discussion items. We will start with Mrs. Tredder and her team with Mount Cyper team presentation.
Yes, I'd be happy to. What do you think, yourself? Who's who of the high school?
I do, yes, very much so.
Could you meet here?
So before I may start, just to give a little background, about four years ago, I applied to be part of a program called XMAST, which is run by NASA, where 10 schools in the country are chosen to do research as part of a competition. We were fortunate enough to win that competition in 2018, and those students got to fly out to the Ames Research Center in California and present their research. Then last year, we were fortunate enough to participate in that same program again. We unfortunately did not win last year, but they were so impressed with all the work that our students have done both of those times, that they reached out to me to pilot what they want to make as like a second iteration of the XMAST program, which is students doing a moon mission concept study. So that's what these five did. They all applied to be part of the program, and then the science department selected them to take part in this research, and so they planned a mission to the moon. So I will let them kind of tell you all about their research, so go ahead, Jerk.
Hi, we're the Moon Trek Candidate Ice Pit Highlands Exploration Research Team, and our names are George Rotherm.
Ella Peterson.
Yes, Goodhobers.
Natalie Roger.
And Eric Kelly.
And today we'll be showing you the research and work we've been doing for the past nine months. PhiloLabs Crater is the crater that this mission would explore. It's a permanent age crater, and it's still relatively young, which helps our mission due to the large impact site on the east of the crater. The impact melt is relatively flat, which makes it easier to find a potential landing site. In this crater, there are geologic features that are called sinuous rills. Sinuous rills are lava tubes that have partially or fully collapsed. The lava tubes formed as lava from impact melt flows through channels that have formed as the outer layer of lava hardens. Due to gravity and decreased pressure within the channels as the lava inside cools, the tube may collapse and create a sinuous riddle. In the case of partially correct collapsed lava tubes, they may have skylights that expose the inside of the lava tube. These skylights on PhiloLabs cannot be identified as pits due to the angle of the sun, but they have been labeled as candidate pits. Several candidate pits have been identified in the northern and southern regions of the impact melt PhiloLabs crater. These candidate pits are also potential permanently shadowed regions, and permanently shadowed regions such as these candidate pits can get as cold as 30 Kelvin or negative 243 degrees Celsius. Because of the extremely cold temperatures, volatiles can be trapped within the candidate pits, and among these volatiles is potential water ice.
And then moving on to the devices we would use in this mission. Viper is a rover designed for NASA's Artemis mission, which will take place in 2023. And in our mission, we have modeled our rover based off of the original Viper, and it will have comparable functions and devices, thus making it a Viper-class rover. This rover moves at approximately 0.4 kilometers per hour when searching for water and other volatiles, but can speed up 0.8 kilometers per hour when it is just navigating surface. This rover is operated by scientists and are near the attempt to avoid hazards, and they can use this information to avoid hazards through the imaging on the rover. The neutron vectoring system, NISS, detects variations of neutrons, so it can identify hydrogen atoms in H2O. The NIRVSS can identify organic compounds and determine the form of hydrogen identified, distinguishing between H2O hydroxide, O2, and other hydrogenous compounds. Akam takes red, blue, green photographs of the surroundings, and also has headlights to allow for clear imaging even with the moon's extreme lighting differences. And then moving on to the second device we'll be using on this mission. Globetrotter is a hopper rover that's a concept in stages of development, signed up by our mentor, Dr. Pascal Lee. This device has aerobatic-like features that allow it to traverse along the moon's rough terrain by bouncing. It has cold gas thrusters to propel itself on approximately 100 meters and then falls back to the surface and bounces back up until it finally comes to rest and then starts another frost. This device is ideal because of its ability to traverse rough terrains, which you discussed in the previous sessions, sinuous rills and entries of candidate pits. This also contains devices carried by Viper, in addition to the accelerometer, which reconstructs altitude, position, and speed versus time, and also constructs map slope profiles. This also optimizes the sun's power for energy. This is solar power.
Okay, and then this is Moon Trek, which is the program that we use to plan our mission around. We worked a lot with the team that developed the software, so we like offered suggestions, improvements, and it's cool to get to work with the team that actually made it. We were given access to more tools than the general public through login, so this is like a screenshot of the website of the task with all the tools that we use. Some tools we use frequently include calculate distance and elevation for planning our path around the requirements of our rovers. And then also through the program, there are different layers that you can use, which are available to anyone who uses the website. They're not as specific as using other tools, but are helpful to see a large area and how it will be used without any sort of delay. We use slope and rock, mostly to find our paths. And then for other tools, you would select a region of the crater and wait about one to three days for results, and these have more specific information. So these are examples of slope maps, which would show the solar region. Since Viper cannot travel slopes greater than 15 degrees, this tool was really helpful. And then we have some images of different examples of slope maps. And then we also had a crater and rock detecting tool, so these tools would identify livers along our path, so we could plan around them. And then we also had rock density and rock fall. Rock density showed how many rocks or boulders were in an area, and then rock fall would show the terrain of an area, although these analyses never ended up working for us. One of the problems we had to overcome with the website was that since newer, some of the tools weren't used too much, there were definitely difficulties we had, and we would confer with the team that made it to help come up with it. And then lastly, this is an example of lighting analysis. Since our rovers are solar powered, we need to make sure we have enough sunlight during our mission. So on the left, that would actually be a video that shows an animation of light in our crater over a month, and then on the right, that shows sunlight in an area at a specific time. And then moving on to another Moon Trek tool. This is land of sight. This shows whether or not there is connection from a specific point on the moon to various deep space stations, ESS locations on Earth, or as satellites in orbit. This tool is important to take into consideration for our mission because radio connection is essential for proper relay of data back to the rover. And then moving on to elevation profile. On the right, you can see the outputs that we generated from using this tool. This tool helped determine elevation and slope of specific locations on the moon, ultimately allowing us to choose the safest landing site possible, because you want a flat slope for a proper landing. And then finally, the last Moon Trek tool is sun angle. This shows azimuth and elevation angles of the sun to a point on the moon. This helped us to establish a timeline in which our mission could take place, because it is essential that the sun is in proper orientation on the moon in the lunar day cycle for solar charging purposes, like I mentioned in the earlier devices. And this also, the lower images explain azimuth angles and other things like elevation incidence angles that we received from a member of the JPL team, which is the general motion lab from them. Okay, so our initial mission plan. So this is our landing site in the left photo, and you can see that we chose an area with a slope of less than 5 degrees, which is essential for landing, because the maximum angle for a landing site is 5 degrees, and you can see by the blue that it was less than 5 degrees. Then, as you can see on the right, there were several candidate pits identified above the northern and southern regions of PhiloLabs crater, and our initial plan was to go to both sets of pits. So here are our original path ideas. Our plan was to travel first up to the northern pits and then back down to the southern pits, and we were going to plan two separate missions overall, one using only Globetrotter and one using only Viper, because at that point, we were still unsure which device would be best for this type of mission and which would like result in the best things. We had a bit of a change of plan, so as we learned more about both of the devices, Globetrotter and Viper, we realized that we charging to both sets of pits was unrealistic for our timeframe. The speed of the rovers was too slow to be able to make the complete traverse from both pits in one lunar day, so we shifted from planning two separate paths for Viper and Globetrotter and instead combined the paths, and we made it so that the, it was one mission using both devices. And we also decided to only have the devices go down to the southern pits, so we would be able to do it all in the, in the correct timeframe.
So our final timeframe is really any 14-day period of the lunar day. The dates that we proposed were April 17, 2027 to May 1, 2027, but realistically, it can be any time of 14 days of sunlight. Our final landing site is the same landing site as we originally proposed, because there are very few areas in that region that match the requirements we have for landing, because the land requirements are very specific. So our final landing site is 4.12 kilometers away from the candidate pits intended for exploration through our mission. Our final path ended up in three sections. Viper and Globetrotter traveled together on what is the purple line on that image, and then they separate at point two, which is what we call the separation point. So the combined path, the purple line, is 4.5-ish kilometers long and will take between six and seven days to arrive. At the separation point, Viper will travel 930.65 more meters to reach its location, approximately 370 meters from the candidate pits. Viper will sit itself there and wait for Globetrotter to send data to it later. From the separation point, Globetrotter will travel a bit further south through a section of extremely rough terrain before turning southwest to travel parallel to Viper. Globetrotter will travel 1.5 kilometers in approximately one to two days to reach the candidate pits. The reason why we made the path this way is because Viper is unable to navigate the difficult terrain between separation point and the candidate pits that Globetrotter travels, because Globetrotter can hop over them, it is able to make that, but Viper also needs to be there to relay data back to Earth later. Once arrived at the candidate pits, Globetrotter will perform a survey over bounds to gather data on the area around the candidate pits. It will then descend into the opening of the pits where it will begin searching for indicators of H2O ice. According to the team who designed Globetrotter, including Dr. Pascal Lee, it can spend up to two hours in extreme dark and cold of the candidate pits. However, we were advised by him and others to err on the side of caution, so Globetrotter will spend a total of one hour in each candidate pit. After leaving a pit, Globetrotter will bounce to an area of high sunlight exposure for charging and with adequate connection to relay the data back to Viper. Our threshold vision, which is the lowest level that we need to say that we were successful, would be to take surface images of candidate pits using Viper from its spot 300-ish meters away from it. Our baseline mission is to explore and take data and relay the data back to Viper from one candidate pit, and our extended mission is to explore, take data, and relay data from two or more candidate pits.
Our main goal throughout all of our research was the final product of creating a research paper, so that's what we've been working on for probably about the last three or four months after we collected all our data and made all our decisions about our mission. So as you can see, that is our paper. We already did two versions, one which is about two pages long, which would be used as an abstract when submitting to conferences or journals, and one that was three pages long, that would be our final full version. We also then ended up making a poster with all of our information, because it's a bit more comprehensive, and it can also... more comprehensive and it can also be used to submit to certain conferences. We also used this poster when we were presenting our information to the X-MAX teams. We were able to present with them because as we are the only ones doing this sort of mission, we didn't have anyone initially to present to, so we were able to present our information to them, so we used that poster when doing so. Our final slide is just a big thank you to everyone who helped us when we were working on this. Dr. Pascal Lee, who you mentioned a few times, advised us a lot throughout this project. We had many, many Zoom meetings with him. Brian Day, someone else that really helped us, who is another advisor, along with the JPL MoonTrack software team and the charter for all of the help throughout the entire year. It would not have been possible without them.
Would you be open to some questions?
Yeah, sure.
So I have a question. So who, did someone else speak up before I did?
Me.
So I, this is awesome, right? I mean, this is, this is just like the coolest thing ever. The maps were obviously such an important part of your, your work, and tell me if I've got this right, or maybe I'll just ask you. You've got a base map, right? That has been, data that's been collected by whatever, you can probably tell me what it's been collected by, but then there's been all this analysis that's been layered over that base map. Do I have that about right?
Yes.
And so how many, how many layers of data were you dealing with at one time? A single layer or were there multiple layers? What did that look like for you?
We can use multiple layers if you'd like to. So you can overlay a slope and then a rock analysis and then maybe even like a sunlight one. You can do that all at once, but it does get really confusing to look at if you have more than one because the colors are all different. So we tended to use only one at a time, but you could totally use two, three, four, like infinite layers to look at whatever region that you're using on the software.
And then also for PhiloLabs, we had multiple map images, map images, which are from narrow angle cameras from satellites, and those have been taken, like, there's many of them, and we use those to research a lot of data.
And then so many of those layers are math, right? I mean, just straight, straight out math.
Yeah, a lot of them have been like kind of simplified to make it easier for us to look at, but some of them are definitely, we don't know what's going on. They're very math.
I wouldn't know anything too well. Anyway, terrific job, just awesome. Really, really great job.
Super awesome. Have you applied to any conferences yet? And then you mentioned that...
We have not done so yet. We are planning on doing that. This project will likely be in the next school year because of that. There's a conference in Chicago that we plan on applying to that happens in December, and there are other ones throughout the year that we need to apply for. And we're also planning on submitting the abstract of our paper to certain journals, some that take more student work like ours, and maybe some that are a little higher up science, and we'll see where that goes.
Fantastic.
What do you aspire to do with this information, right? Are you looking to get into this field of what?
Are any of us going into this field? Obviously. I'm sure at this moment, we were actually offered by Dr. Pascal Lee that he might have some summer opportunities for us, so some of us are looking into working with him over the summer as well, so we'll see where it all leads. Yeah, most of us are juniors, so most of us don't exactly know what we're doing in college, but it's a great opportunity for any field that we're going into just to have this like in our pocket.
And I see you guys have brought some cheerleaders with you tonight, some very special people. Could you take a moment just to introduce them to us, please?
Yeah, that was my mom, Michelle Kelly. And my daughter sister here.
Good evening, welcome. I'm grateful for your group, thank you.
And you already know my mom.
Where's the other one there?
Do you have a question?
Oh, please.
I have a question. Did you get to name anything?
We named ourselves the Mount Viper Team. We actually spent the first maybe two days of this project just coming up with acronyms. We had a few really bad ones before I came up with this one, and it's about all we got to name. And that's also our mission name. Oh, yeah, sure. So the acronym became very important later.
So you didn't get to name one of the things you were looking for?
No.
Not yet.
Because our research wasn't on defining candidate pit. If we were like looking for more of them in the future, then we probably wouldn't have been able to, but that's not what we did.
One of the interesting things, but also I think frustrating for them, was that, as Mia had mentioned before, they had scientist-level access to the MoonTrack program, but that meant that they were doing a lot of the beta testing for new tools, and so they would meet with the JPL team and say, this worked, this didn't, this would be helpful, this wasn't. So like, that's a really neat thing for them to have experience and been a part of, but I definitely know it was frustrating at the time as they're opening a file, this doesn't say anything, why doesn't this say anything? But it was really a very neat experience that most people, much less high schoolers, do not get a chance to do, so it's very cool.
Well, thank you for bringing these opportunities to our students.
Can we break on Ms. Tretter for just a minute? Ms. Tretter, can you tell everyone what you're doing this summer?
I will be headed to Switzerland. I will be doing a three-part particle physics study program at the CERN facilities in Geneva. So I will be touring labs, looking at all of the facilities, and then working on how to bring particle physics back to the high school physics classroom. So I'll be collaborating. I'm one of 48 teachers from 34 different countries that will be participating in that program.
That's awesome.
Thank you all so much. You're out of this world.
All right, this question is 60. Committee, the reports, you start with Jessica. You want to give your last time of report?
I didn't pass it to him because he was the treasurer and left.
There you go.
Sure thing. So the findings committee, we met on Monday, made the majority of our time was just to lay off the year ahead. As a committee, we decided I would be the chairperson, and we agreed to continue meeting on the second Monday each month at 5:30 as we have in the past. We reviewed the budget calendar and all the dates from now through October. We reviewed the taxes we recently received through the month of April, and we discussed the timing of the tax payments and the timing of the state payments, and how that affects our cash flow and fund balance at the end of the year. We accepted a generous donation of $2,100 from Mount Orbe, Area Food Pantry, as we go to assist our launch program in various ways. Finally, we just discussed some of the challenges relating to adjustment of school times. Some of these challenges, bus driver availability, labor, and just time conflicts with both food service and custodial payment series as well. And then we are scheduled to meet next Monday night at 5:30 PM.
Thank you. Questions for Jim? So then you get to give the, see, it's just telling you, you get to give your report on safety. You want to sleep with me?
Yes, so we met on May 16th. We elected the new board chair, or yeah, committee chair, established our same meeting day and time. Brian gave us several updates for equity. He talked about our new piece with the district's old police station, so at least for two years. It's going to be a site for our 18- to 21-year-old program, the GDO program, and a site for students who have been either expelled or pre-expulsion, placed for them to go to get some support and do work, but it's not on campus. It's a pretty exciting space that we have. We didn't really talk about this, but maybe it's something we can go tour on. Then Brian also gave us a mental health update and said the last for the school year, the couple of counseling went out. He talked about zones of regulation implementation for our grades K through 12, sort of practice training, the SIP training that's going to happen this summer is almost full. That was, I think, going to be, it got so full for teachers that, which is a great thing. And then in terms of school safety, Brian shared that they did their school check all the buildings, make sure that everything was locked, and talked about, you know, anything, any areas that were places that needed to be addressed. He also showed us a new slideshow that's about vaping and tobacco prevention that's going to be showed in our school. It was, it's a short, little, engaging thing, which is good. We also talked about school start times. Brian gave us a few, Brian spoke with a few people from the Madison School District, talked about why they changed their start time, the cost of it. And for us, you know, going from 8:05 to 8:30, the cost, the logistics, all that, it might not make that much sense for 20 minutes. So although we did discuss it, we didn't put it on a future agenda item. And then we looked at one policy, the emergency nursing services, which is on the agenda, I think, for this evening. So we'll learn more about it shortly. And our next meeting is June 20.
Thank you. Questions for Jessica? All right. We move on to 60, 2021, 2022 student performance data comparison. We will bring Sarah Strucker down.
Hi, everybody. So this presentation is going to be rather visual. I'll stick hands and drive it like, hope the projector does it justice, so I can go up here and look at it for a bit and see. Okay, so this presentation is a continuation of previous versions you have seen, but they were the kind of last layer on this time. And I believe we had another presentation pretty about November. We did some academic updates as well as some other updates with our principals back in the workshop in the district office. So you see similar slides and formats, but more data. This on fall data, or maybe spring, spring data. Okay, so we'll start with kindergartners through second graders. So this graph you've seen before. You actually saw it where that word yellow is set fall, but now we're looking to the spring data. At the top, we see the legend of the school years in the color coding system. You'll note that there is no S2020. We didn't do assessments that spring that we shut down, so that will be missing in the data. So PALS is a functional screener that we do with our 4K through second graders, and each grade level has a different benchmarking for where the students are in their learning. So this assessment looks at priming, sounds, letter recognition, spelling. As we can see, over the six years that are listed in each of those five areas, we see that dip that we had in 2021 last school year on this time. As we know, as we discussed and frustrated about, right? We did see a different level of learning from those kiddos within that class of 2021 at the kindergarten level. But we also want to see then how this incoming kindergarten class did as well. So we can see here, oh, sorry. Nope, good. So the TIL does show that this current kindergarten group is doing just as well or maybe even better than their predecessor in certain areas. Our teachers really hit letter sounds pretty hard this, this school year. A lot of work in the functional awareness. How letters sound, how we can manipulate sounds. If I take, say, saw, I take the, that's a bad, if I use the word call and I take the C off and put a B, what is it? Fall, right? That kind of work hit a lot with kiddos with the resource we were using. 10 to 15 minutes every day with it, and you can see how our letter sounds have been improving over the years past, but actually better than other years as well.
So can I just clarify, Sarah? So for 2022, spring 2022, both of the kiddos that last year were in 4K, correct? And 4K was in person all year almost?
Correct, yeah. Had broken up. Yeah, they had the typical 48 schedule they had previous years. So that was a success that our kindergarten team shared.
I'm sorry, you may be answering on the next slide, but so the orange, the orange kids struggled in 2021. What, where, where are those orange kids in a graph? Are they in another graph somewhere that we can see?
I'm talking about our first graders.
Okay, true.
And I'm talking about our second graders.
So just to clarify though, the kids in the 2022, not all of them were in person last year. So those who chose to be virtual were those who did?
We had a small group of virtual, correct? That as time went on, we had not even a handful, but a few were tripling every couple months, yeah. But we did have a smaller one-classroom group of kiddos. Yep. And some of parents selected not to do 4K, and they had their kiddos either go this year or they just have to go to 5K this year. Any questions? Anything else? Okay, okay. So this is a slide you saw last November. So this is our fall reading instructional level. So I think most of you all that have had kids come up through the elementary grade system where you learn your child's reading level and you got to accept their child's reading level, that's what this chart shows. I'm just going to walk up here, but that's okay. That's where Van is going to come in. Okay. So this is a view, as I said, instructional reading levels in the fall. Our current school year is in green, and this is in this one, the 21, 22 school year. We can see that a lot of our kiddos entering first grade when they were assessed for their reading levels were at this readiness level, which would be around a level A, a level A, a level B, when they were entering a school year. And I have an example of what that looks like on the next slide, so just bear with me here. Whereas in a typical school year, where we've seen in previous years, we have a larger amount of students, in some case up to 50% of our incoming first graders, reading at the pre-premier level, which is, you know, at a level C or so, which is where they should be from kindergarten to first grade. Does that make sense so far? Cool. Get the next slide. So what does that mean? In a typical year, kiddos are reading, what that 40, 50%, were entering first grade, reading at a level C, which is what that looks like. But our kiddos this year, our first graders, were entering, a good amount were entering at all. We had some kiddos who were reading still at second, third, fourth grade level, but a larger amount were reading at this level A, so short, four to five word sentences as they entered. Is that so far? Okay, great. So how, so how they do throughout the year, right? So here's that same graph, but on the spring data. Okay. And a lot more great, a lot of various reading levels shown as to where the kiddos are at. So again, green is the current school year. We can see where a lot of our first graders entered, you know, at this, this level. We can see how they've been progressing in a more typical pattern to, to previous school years. Most of them stay here. So, let's see here. I'd say, you know, looking anywhere from this pre-premier level, which is more that CD level by that of the school year, we see a little higher here into kiddos at the second or even third grade reading levels by the time they finish grade one.
So that data read is, Sarah, does it say almost, almost, one in five first graders are reading at the third grade level?
Yeah, yeah, or you could say, see, it's more come out, you know?
And these were last year's kindergartners?
Correct, yeah. Maybe reading second grade or above, actually more than that. If I should add up, maybe second grade and above, you get a higher level there too. I just didn't do that math.
It was 48% when I calculated. I was just kidding.
That always. So yeah, I think this gives a better picture of where our kiddos are going and how they are progressing in their reading levels. And again, our first grade team really worked on letter sounds and just going back a little bit more into the basics to catch up where kiddos were at and where they were at. But we're seeing more typical square of their G level they want. So again, just, just what that looks like in first grade. I'd mentioned those pre-premier, second, and third grade, and that's what, sort of what that looks like for reading levels of what the kiddos are reading as they leave first grade. Any questions on that? Okay. So going to the current second grade class, state chamber. So going to the current second grade class, state chamber, Jean, I'll show you a fall slide and a spring slide. So our fall slide, so these kiddos, right, were kindergartners when March twenty twenty is occurred. And then they went through the first grade year last year, and now they're in second grade this year. We do see again, the current second graders is in green. A good twenty percent entered second grade at that maybe beginning of first grade level again. Again, we do see them spread out, but we do have a larger chunk, chunk than usual at that pre-primer or a level C reading level. So jumping ahead to May, uh, the student levels, again, here are, visually are more aligned to where we see more like seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen school year. But what we can see last year's second grade. And how telling it was with some of those yellows as well, um, where, where the kiddos ended up. But again, our kiddos are progressing in some ways, maybe lagging behind in some areas, but in some ways very typical with previous years.
So if you were to superimpose your ideal distribution over any one of these graphs, what would it, what would it look like? I mean, obviously it would be skewed forward from the grade, the current grade level, right? But what, what would it, what would, what would it look like?
I really want that also as reading level.
Right, but, well, right, but I mean, you don't, even in a, right? You, you're doing better than that as it is. Is that, I mean, is this about what you would hope for? Or I guess it's, I mean, I'm trying to get a sense, there's nothing, there's no context for this other than pass performance. So what, what is your expectation? What do you, what is your standard?
Yeah, that's a good question. The rule of thumb out there is, is ideally you want eighty, eighty, eighty percent of all your students, eighty percent proficiency, right? So if we set proficiency at grade level, right? If we have eighty percent, we can do math. Visually looking at it, we're pretty much close. Eighty percent of students, we can add.
Okay, that's helpful.
To grade level. Uh, because, um, sometimes students need more intervention support. You have certain instructional needs that are mapped through intervention services. And that was about more intensive services, maybe five to ten percent of your population.
Right.
And then another maybe, um, ten to fifteen, maybe more zero two, or just maybe, they just need a little bit more of like a double dose or less of an intervention. So that's why the eighty percent number is there.
Yeah, that's helpful.
In my mind, we always want at least, at least a student one year in one year's time. What we're finding here is we're moving kids one and a half years and or more in one year's time through some of this data. That's a large percentage of students, which is just incredible, just really incredible.
I mean, no one wanted to do it before, right?
No.
But, um, our staff in the fall, we really looked at what, what the year has with the reading that we did, we were furthest, quickest, really focusing on reading and sound, reading and those holdings was where we wanted to go. It'll help us to, like, those holdings together to, to make words and to read and sound.
Good, thank you.
We'll take a pause, that was the key to data. Any questions? Okay, thank you. So three, five data. And I can go through every slide because it's redundant and you have a slides and you have more, I think, as well. But I do want to start with, um, our fast bridge results. So these results are, we've seen in the past, I've just been adding bar graphs to get the winter and the spring data there. And also visually you can see some things I want to point out. But, uh, so FastBridge is a computer adapter online either reading or math assessments. About twenty-five minutes, just in stage, just to get a pulse as to where they're at for us. Look at how healthy our system is. Okay, so third grade, uh, eight reading, so that reading adaptive test. Just visually over time, um, as I mentioned in other presentations, I like to look at sort of where, how, or eighty percent of our kids reading that proficiency level. Or looking at the intervention piece. So down the red, down the bottom, the red or the yellow, looking at how many students are in the, that extra intervention piece. We can see over time, just in those two bottom areas, less students are needing intervention support. And there are more than average range learning, which is something to be commended. Because we started off the year with about twenty-five percent of our kids at that tier two, tier three reading level needs, and we're down two, seven percent. So not only the work of our reading specialists, but also our classroom teachers as well. Math, um, I am, I am, I'm really proud of the team. The, this, the third grade team really got down, dug down deep and used some of the tools we had. Really bought into our management, the coaching they received. Really bought into the way that each other classrooms still learn from each other. And this, this data from fall to spring is pretty astounding, just visually looking at, just the pretty change in colors, right? That, that tells the story of when we look at, what, well, eighty percent of our kids were at fifty percent, tell our higher in the assessments. Whereas that was not the end of the fall. So huge kudos to our, our third grade team for owning, owning the resource, owning their learning, helping impact student learning. Really proud of them. I'm just at the fourth grade for now, because I have a highlight part, the fifth grade piece, where you can see the fourth grade data. This is, this is pretty level over time, both through reading and for math. And then fifth grade, we'll see next. I think, I think I might get the math, but, uh, the reading portion as well. We can see over time that this cohort of students has been relatively stable even before the pandemic. And we can see how they fare. And that was a piece that I think we had an aha back in the fall, or even back maybe this time last year, that the older the students were when they answered the pandemic, they had those foundational skills already there, that they continue on with their learning in most cases. Whereas it was our youngest learners who hit it hardest. Maybe a little bit less, I think that slide's your last slide, so it's gonna be. And then fifth grade as well. And aha, then like, huh, uh, looking at their data. So I apologize for years being left off, I tried to fix it so many times. So third grade, third grade, right? And then fourth grade, uh, winter, spring, and then fall, winter and spring, fourth grade. This, this team also really embraced some of the pieces of co-teaching. They really embraced the co-teaching piece really well, especially in the area of math and grouping kids and shooting kids and goalkeeping kids. That we saw amazing gains actually from fall to winter. The gains didn't quite stick visually. Part of it, part of my wonder is, we took a board exam, which is a big state assessment, and then a couple weeks later, took this assessment as the graders in the spring. Just really seeing, right, this, I'm wondering, like, this fifth graders. So I don't know if the spring data is truly showing what they truly know compared to the winter data. But again, just, um, some pretty strong kiddos and strong team at grade level to show some pretty spring results.
Sarah, can I? You're doing such a terrific job, I feel.
I'm done, you're getting my closer.
If you don't mind, I do want to bring, um, attention to the board with fourth grade. Fourth grade is an area that, here you got just an amazing team of professionals to begin with. But the results aren't where we want them to be. And I think we can do even better. And thanks to the board, thanks to the community for allowing me to utilize some of our ESR dollars that we have forthcoming to help with math interventions. Because you can see, we're making some progress, but then to this point that you raised, by the time we get to spring, some of our, our kids, particularly in the top tier, aren't quite where we want them to be. So we've got some work ahead of us, but that's not through lack of effort. We're just really very proud of the work that our staff has done to get us to this point. And I think we're going to be even stronger as a result of some of the interventionists and coaches we're going to have on, on staff during the next couple of years. Appreciate your leadership too, Sarah Straka. You've really been, really, really remarkable in helping to coordinate these best practices. So with that, might we be able to answer any questions or observations if you have?
Questions from the board?
Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for, for on the journey. It's been quite the same visuals, it's very similar. It's for humor in the end, but it's just nice to see over time how our kiddos have been progressing, so.
We're making more colorful.
So no, it's at least visual, we're visual.
More to see more in here.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Number sixty, Reddick School Parent Contracts. Mr. Deon.
Come on up. I'll just go tomorrow.
So one of the things I recognize as I sat with Brian Phil, Transportation Board here, is with some of our committees, as they continue to meet virtually, sometimes we don't see people face to face as often. And I was thinking about BGT and the fact that, you know, we're always on screen, but we don't always see each other face to face, so here we all are. Before we get into the topic, I, Brian doesn't embarrass easily, and it's certainly not my role to embarrass him, but I do want to recognize our transportation team led by Brian and the folks in the office. The significant drop in driver shortage, you know, driver availability across the country has been, um, in many cases catastrophic. And the fact that as we think about where now in the last week of school, and we made it through the school year with pretty small numbers of drivers, what our drivers have done to step up, not only in day-to-day trips, but also all of our co-curricular activities, nights and weekends, when there's just not many of them available. There are people that have driven out a lot this year for our district. And so that was my brief opportunity to say thank you to the team for all your efforts because, you know, it's, I always think of transportation as both ends. You know, we take kids to school and we take kids home, and it gives them an opportunity to have a successful school day because of people like them. So on behalf of the district, thank you to you. All right, now to the topic at hand. So the BGT committee, you may have seen in minutes over the last number of meetings, have talked on and off about private school transportation contracts. Most recently at its main BGT meeting. We actually talked quite a bit in detail about what private school transportation contracts are under state statute, when school districts are allowed to use them and so on. And so, Dr. Swinell, thank you for putting it up on the screen. There is an attachment with Word docs, it's a three-page document. And I thought I'd provide a little bit of background and insight first before we kind of jump into the nuts and bolts of the contract. So DPI allows a school district to provide a contract to private school parents and guardians under two conditions to meet state statute. The first condition is that a public school must see that its estimated cost to transport a private school student is at least one and a half times greater than what it costs to transport a public school student. There actually is a worksheet that, and it's a spreadsheet, as you can imagine, that DPI has available for school districts that it uses to determine just what is the average cost to transport a public school pupil. The challenge with us from a, from a practical sense is that we need to wait till we get to the end of our fiscal year to be able to unplug in our actual data from this current school year to determine if in fact we are at least one and a half times greater in expenses. We're expecting that we are for sure, right, done some math for some previous years. But I did it for a previous year prior to the pandemic, because of the pandemic, which is a whole different anomaly when it came to cost. So that's the first condition, is a school district must see that its cost is at least one and a half times greater to transport that private school pupil. And then the second item is that a school district that uses private school contracts needs to be able to provide that dollars to private school parents at least thirty days prior to the start of the public school's new school year. It would be our intent that if we were to move forward with such an idea that we would know it by parents in July, it would give us an opportunity for the fiscal year to be over after June thirtieth, we'd be able to put that worksheet together and then attach it with this contract that we'll get to in a second. We did look at some other schools in the area that do private school contracting. And then we also worked with our school attorney to make sure that it not only fits state statute, because we never want to assume that other districts are following suit. And we were able to do that. And then we were able to just tweak it slightly for what we thought could work for our schools. I'll stop right there before we get into the actual contract, just to see if there's any questions or comments. So the contract itself would be sort of a three-pager. First one that you'll see up on the screen here is just simply a cover sheet that would go to parents that talks about, one, that public school districts have the ability to, to use a contract like this. We would look to reimburse private school parents for their transportation costs that they took down in a two-part system, and we would pay after each semester. There are some school districts that make the parents wait for the whole year and then reimburse them at the end of the year. We thought it would make more sense to do it by semester. There is a mechanism in the contract that addresses exactly how they get reimbursed, how we determine what that cost is. The most important thing from a cost point of view is two things. One, we determine costs based on, of course, how far the family lives from the private school, of course, the number of miles that they're driving. Through work with the attorney and through, um, the work with the financial services team at DPI, we determine that we can calculate that cost based on the IRS mileage rate. So you may know that January first, usually January first of each year, the IRS will determine what its reimbursement rate is per mileage, and that's what we would use. The other item that we would also use is that worksheet, again, that I mentioned earlier, where we would calculate what the average cost per pupil to transport in a public school is. And then we would pay which one, whichever one is less. So for example, if, um, the average student transportation per pupil cost is eight hundred dollars, could be more, could be less, I don't call me to the number. But if it was eight hundred dollars, but a family determined that it costs them nine hundred dollars to transport their child using the IRS rate, um, state statute would say that we would use the eight hundred dollar average cost. So as far as the, the cover sheet, the intent is simply to inform the parent that there is such a thing, that there is a private school contract that the district would be providing. We actually thought it would be best for the parents who, or guardians, to provide a signed contract back to the district by August fifteenth. That would give us an opportunity to understand who signed up for the service, what should we expect in terms of budgeting, so we know what to pay at the end of each semester. The second page is the, after the cover letter is the actual contract itself. And again, it just allows the parent or guardian to list who they are, who their student is, what school they attend. We have two private school contract, or contracts, two private schools. In our district, we have High Point Christian. And even though St. Francis Xavier and Cross Plains is that in our district, we do have a statutory obligation to provide transportation to that facility as well. So we have two, two schools that we currently provide transportation for. The nuts and bolts under the terms of the contract, the first paragraph, as our attorney would say, is more legalese kinds of things. The second few bullet, the second and third bullet talk more about the, the dates that parents need to be aware of in terms of requesting reimbursement. And then toward the latter part of the contract, it gets into, um, if a family moves and they move out of district, they need to submit their reimbursement, so we, we'll repay them. their reimbursement. So we know we pay them. They're responsible for keeping up with their address, not only for transportation contracts, but just in general to make sure that they're still students in public schools based on their residence. On the third page, the third page is the actual reimbursement form itself. This is the form that the parent or guardian would complete to let us know what they should be reimbursed for. And so the top portion talks about how they calculate what their cost of transportation was. And as you can see here, they would provide us the total days that they drove, the number of days that their child actually attended school, times the number of miles per day, times the cost per mile, which is that IRS rate, to come up with the total for the year. Like I said, we, we would like parents to submit it twice a year, so that they don't have to wait the full nine and a half months to get reimbursed. The, the next box, as we scroll down, talks about the maximum reimbursement without the C average cost. So for example, when I said $800 versus $800, it would be $800, and that way it makes it a even playing field for everybody. And then they would provide this reimbursement form, just like if they lived outside to the bus garage, they would provide this reimbursement form also to Brian and his team, so they can keep it in file. One of the questions that came up at BGT was, I thought was really the question, was, you know, what's, what's the purpose of it? Is the purpose of this, the lack of drivers? Is it, is there some other operational issue besides drivers? Is it a cost situation? You know, what exactly is the purpose of this? And we conclude that it's really an efficiency piece. I mean, yes, we have, you know, we don't have an overabundance of drivers coming in to, to drive with us. But when we're assigning an individual CBL licensed driver for a very significantly small number of kids relative to other roads, it really does become an efficiency issue with us. And through work with the school attorney, like I mentioned, and with DPI, we realized, number one, there are districts out there that are utilizing this tool. And number two, it gives some flexibility for a school district that's pretty strapped in its operations to continue to provide service to public school kids, and yet still be able to provide a service to private school kids as well. It does come with a cost, of course, but it does ensure that we're providing an opportunity for all kids to get to school, especially under the circumstances that we're, that we're currently experiencing. Thanks for listening.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
And maybe I'm overthinking this, which is very, very much something that I do. So under cost of transportation, where the parent is figuring out how much it costs, and you say, sure, for the IRS tax tables, I'm not sure if that changes on an annual basis. So they might have $1 amount for the first part of the year, and then after January 1st, another dollar, like $0.52 or $0.42 for the second part of the year. Should we provide two lines? I'm getting overthinking this, but...
No, actually, I appreciate the thought. Brian and I talked a little bit about that topic today. And it was my thinking that at the time they submitted reimbursement would be whatever that rate is. So for example, they provide a reimbursement for the end of January, obviously, that would be after the new rates are out for the year. As long as that's not a significant difference, I would just assume that we keep whatever that
Whatever they change, you're in one dollar amount, is okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
Because I thought about that too. Like, don't need to have multiple.
Yes, you just...
Okay.
Is it, is it a vice versa lower cost, or is it just our cost being the lower cost that we refer to?
It is, whichever cost is lower. So if, if private school parent has a cost that's lower than our average cost, then we would reimburse them for their average cost because it's lower.
I have a question. Okay, so what if I have two kids that I drive to the school? I didn't see that in there. Do they, we pay them, for two kids, even though they're transporting them theoretically in the same vehicle?
In the same vehicle, yes.
Okay.
The attorney actually talked with DPI to address that exact topic, not necessarily because somebody might be trying to save a buck, but rather making sure that we don't violate state statute. And what he found is that state statute does not allow the district to reimburse one family that has three kids only one time, because three kids in a car, one kid in a car, it costs the exact same amount, right, to transport that child. But we would actually reimburse three times in that example.
Okay. Are we gonna require any sort of, like, transcript for the how many days they went to school, or we're just taking them on their, their word?
The intent is that we would take them on their word.
I had one for it, but I didn't write it down. Nope. Gone. Lost it.
Can you talk about next steps then in terms of, it sounds like we're gonna need to do some calculations?
Okay.
And then our intent is to bring this back before the board to consider formal approval, likely at the January, July 5th meeting.
Yeah. So the worksheet portion of it would be, you know, a very quick turn, right? And probably we need to get into that second week to actually firm up every number, but we'd be like 99% there. We would be far enough into it that we would know where we stand in terms of costing. It's just that a few insignificant bills come in, like right around the 4th of July. Well, you know, and, but, but you raised a good point, because, again, going back to the beginning of our discussion, one of the conditions that we need to meet to be able to provide a contract to parents is to hit that 30-day prior to the start of our school year, which, for lack of math, we'll just say it's August 1st. So we also are asking in the contract that parents let us know by signing the contract and returning it to us by August 15. So I would like to do exactly what you just described, with the first meeting in July being July 5. And then just know that if, you know, I get one last few bill, I need to just tweak that worksheet a little bit. But the, the contract itself, we've done a pretty significant amount of work with our school attorney on this, just to make sure that all the eyes are dotted from a statutory point of view. And I appreciate him connecting with the school financial services team to make sure that DPI is only creating a, with power and having gained and gotten this role with us. And thank you BGT members, of course, for their dialogue a few weeks ago.
I have my last question. Sorry. So they need a contract per each student that they have, right? So if they have three kids, and they're driving off to read, they need three contracts. Do we need them, like, clearly?
Yes. I think, yes. Sorry.
Did it, did it, like, totally tell them?
I just, I just saw it myself.
Okay.
It's a separate, submit a separate claim for each child.
Okay, I just missed it.
So, yeah, it does say that.
We, we can underline it and maybe do a couple additional five things that we need to stick out though.
Maybe, like, give the initial letter? Because I think, I, I focused really hard on the letter, and then everything else was like, okay, this is all, like, forms and stuff. I focused less on the forms.
Maybe in the contract as well.
Yeah.
My, my question, I'm sorry if it was in the materials, and I just missed it, is how does insurance work? Is it, are, are we the insurer if there's an accident?
Yeah. So by having this private school contract under state statute, it allows them to drive their child. They're basically understanding that they are now solely responsible, not only for getting their child to school, but also all the...
Insurance and...
Insurance issues.
Covered in all of them, unless, in the first term, then.
What's that?
The, I'm, so that would be covered generally in the first term of the contract, if it was provisioned. Other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks. We'll see you back here in July.
Okay.
All right, moving on to seven, or actually, I missed the first reading, revisions to Form 503.1, Emergency Nursing Services, Mr. Johnson.
Thanks for having me tonight. This is our Emergency Nursing Policy. With CJ Goodman, school nurse at the Millland High School, really took a look at this and did a lot of the work. Kind of condensing it using WASB's recommendation, and also going back to our philosophy about what's a policy and what should be admin regs. And so taking some of the, a lot of it out, and putting it in the admin regs. It went to stop, there's one suggestion, and you'll notice that was the bullet number seven.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Motion by Leah, signed into by Jessica. Further discussion. Harry Nun, this is a first reading, so we'll do a roll call vote. Jessica?
Yes.
Rod?
Aye.
Leah?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Policy passes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to eight, citizens' comments. Citizens' comments.
We're grateful that you're here today. Thank you.
Right. Harry Nun, you will see under number nine, our future agenda items are very lengthy. Despite that, as always, if you have an agenda item, please feel free to reach out to your Steve. We will get those on the agenda. Moving on to ten, schedule next meetings.
President's very interesting. I'm gonna reject. No question, just to note that E and F, our first meeting in July will take place on Tuesday, July the 5th. So education gets started at 6:00 PM, and the board meeting follows.
Thank you. Did you want to meet on the floor?
No, no, no. You got a little technical problem. That's...
I see that. Then it should, letter F should say July 5th, 10 years.
Yeah.
I was confused. No, no, but I...
All right, moving on to 11, executive session. Have the closed session, session per section, 19.85, paragraph 1 up to paragraph C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Leah, second by Jessica. So we roll call. Jessica?
Yes.
Rod?
Aye.
Leah?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. We'll take about five minutes.